All right, welcome everybody. This is Monday, June 29. We're going to start our commission briefing. I guess we'll go around the room. And how about if I just go around and say people's names and that way we're not talking over everyone? Thumbs up?
Works for me.
Okay, so we've got Commissioner Schudy, Commissioner Netherman, Judge Steele, Frank Pinter, Tim Whitehead, Lisa DeWolfe, Leo Kim, Ross McDowell, Jennifer Byerly, Patty Maguire. We got the District Court, Travis Adams. And I believe that is it. All right, Frank, let's start with you.
Good morning, Commissioners. The first item we have is an item that came up at the very end of last week. And I'll ask Ross and to bring it forward in regards to the Sand Hill Parks and baseball season. Ross?
Morning, everybody. Well, it was brought my attention through Commissioner Netherlands. He worked with the three groups that are up at Sand Hill to come up with a reasonable return to play plan. And I gotta say, they did a fantastic job on this return to play plan. They have it set up that there's only going to be three of the fields used and a fourth field for just a overflow if they really do need it. The three groups are going to work, or they're going to play independently. So it means that nobody's going to overshine each other or show up when they're not supposed to show up. They're going to be all scheduled out. They're going to do their own station as far as their sanitation. They're going to take care of all their own coming in to make sure that everybody has mask and everybody's temperature. They're doing all of that. They separated out where the kids are going to be at and where the adults are going to be at, and they're going to hold it down to 25 people instead of the 50. They're going to hold it down to 25. And I gotta say, they did a great job on this, this plan. The only holdback we have right now is we're still waiting with Dr. Stein a little bit on the, do the kids that are out playing need to have masks on? Nobody's really, it would be such a simple question to just say yes or no. And we're battling it through John Weisman from Department of Health. And he's saying, well, do what it says in the governor's order. Well, the governor's order doesn't say anything about it in the Phase Two, Phase Three about face mask at all. So you can either take it as we don't have to worry about it at all, or they have to wear it. So we're trying to get a good clarification. And Commissioner Netherland, if you'd like to jump in, I know I missed some of this.
Yeah, for the most part, it was pretty impressive. It's been the first time in like 25 years that they've all worked together. They separated out the field to where there will be three different entrances so that nobody's coming onto the field and even using one common area. They're going to tape off and completely control any access into the common areas where the where the concession stands were, none of that will be used. All the dugouts will be closed off as well so that they will not be sitting together or coming together in the dugouts. They will have their own sanitation stations, as was explained. They're also will take care of their own porta potties and have them brought in, plus have their own control officer onsite at all times that they're there. As they explained, they will not use the fields at the same time and no more than three of those fields will be used. And even when they are taking off the kids and picking up the kids, they're picked up in three separate locations so that they don't mix. Each one of the groups agreed to do this. Each one actually signed on. And then again, they will not be cross-using the park at all. Dr. Stein, in talking with him, Dr. Stein ended up going along with it. There was still a little bit of confusion on whether or not to use the masking. So we went with the stricter, which I prefer to be honest with you until you hear different. And we heard different this morning. So we'll wait for Dr. Stein to make that final determination. But I just hope that anytime we use any of these fields, there will be, by the way, no gameplay. The closest will be a sandlot game without the parents. The only time the bleachers will be used, they'll be separated as well. If there has to be a parent there, other than that, they're going to be expected to wait up in the cars. I don't, it's pretty darn good. I just hope we expect the same everywhere in order to protect our kids. And again, I'm not a fan of having any tournaments in any manner. It just doesn't make sense right now to put everybody at risk that way.
Which is, which is ever so true. And it is part of the governor's guidance that they have the return, return to play plan approved. And this one is approved. This one was a very good plan that they did. So it's going to still be that way. If people want to use MCRA, they're going to have to have a plan put together. And this plan would be a very good template. A little bit different for MCRA just by geographically where things are at in MCRA. But it still can be used the same, same basics as what they put in. I gotta commend them. They did a great job on this one.
Ross, do they have, see, at Sand Hill, at least we have those side gates so we can do you have those? I didn't see the, at MCRA.
No, there's no side gates. The best we have is the, once you come in the front gate to Y off, and you could have two up here and two down, down below. You could do it that way. But it might take a little more to it. But I think it can be done. That's it.
The same folks that I worked with to put this together have volunteered to work any group at MCRA to help them to put together the same type of plan with the same type of restrictions. You know, I'll work with them also if they ask, but they've all volunteered so that we can work together as a county.
I also believe that Ross has made some signs, or signs are being made to go up, letting people know what they need to do too.
Right. The signs we made today, they will have what the governor said in about the 50, 50 participant or 50 people at one diamond at a time. Spectators will have to wear masks. Players, we're still working on that part, but that's not mentioned on there. But it is washing your hands, all the other things that they did say. So that's about it.
So the question we have is, can we move forward with opening up Sand Hill and then moving towards opening up MCRA?
I'm good with that. I think, just to kind of echo some of the comments that have already been made, I think this is a well thought out approach by the teams, you know, that you know, they really kind of figured out what they need to do to be responsible. Of course, you know, the caveat is, you know, we'll see how they implement it. And, you know, and that's going to be, that's going to be as important as the planning process itself. But I think this is a great start. Ross, just, just for some clarity on my side, have we heard any, any groups wanting to use MCRA who are is kind of a template and have been going through the process?
No, every, the group, I've talked to a couple of them that have been there. They have canceled pretty much everything they're doing. One of the things that I'm going to offer to them is they can do a kind of a pickup, you know, and do some practice with certain people or, you know, pitching practice, batting practice, that kind of stuff if they'd like to do that. And call them back and let them know that. But there's not going to be any games up there. So I will get back with those folks to make sure. We have been getting a lot of calls from out of county wanting to use our fields. From Seattle and Kitsap and a couple of other places that want to use our fields. Because, and it's going to be no, that the fields are held for our folks. You're going to need to make a reservation just like what they did up there in Randy's group from up there at Sand Hill. So we're going to have that happen there.
Okay, so we're thinking still no tournaments?
No.
And then no county?
No, Dr. Stein has been pretty adamant about no tournaments because you got way too many people show up for those, for one. Secondly, the whole masking thing. And we did have the senior tournament turn in a, a plan. I could not see this happening the way they said they were going to do it. Basically, because one of the things on the last bullet was bring beer. And I just don't know, I mean, that, not that I'm against that. I think beer and softball go hand in hand, but you know, not at a park. So
You can't blame
a little bit of an issue.
Can't blame them for trying.
Right on, right on. Yes, indeed. Yes, indeed. One of the things we are looking at, if we do do the MCRA, we are looking at, we'll probably have to get a summer help or else do some change around, which I'm looking at so that we have people there on the weekends. Because normally our normal, our normal staff is not there on weekends. So we'll probably have to do some shifting around. And that'll only be until August 15th when we start on the project for the irrigation, the new irrigation system. So we might have it that they can be open until then.
I think we're missing someone.
We just lost
We lose Randy?
Another one.
We lost Randy. Hold on, let me have someone check it out.
On your wall?
We have, we have someone checking it out.
The pleasures of a Zoom meeting.
Boy, if Zoom ever goes down, I don't know what's going to happen. I'm knocking on wood while I say that, okay?
Webex or GoToMeeting or?
Yeah.
Microsoft Teams.
Yep.
On and on.
Old school Skype.
Can you get this many people on Skype?
I, I don't know. Probably not.
I didn't think so.
They only had 20 years to figure it out.
Missed that phone.
Well, I said he crashed. He should be back on in just a minute.
Okay.
All right, we got Randy back.
Okay, then what we'll do is we'll move forward with Sand Hill and as MCRA follows, we will move forward with a program for MCRA as well.
I really like that. I think that's a great idea. It's good to get our kids out again.
Especially for the summer. Okay, next item was revenue forecast. So complex and difficult issue projecting the unknown. So our previous projection started off with sales tax reducing somewhere between 30 and 35% or about $2.5 million by the end of the year. Was going to be reduced by about $1 million. Other fees within the Treasurer's Office was going to be reduced by about 3/4 of $1 million. And the general fund fees, those would be fees from courts, Superior District Court fees through DCD and other service fees in various departments would lose about another $1 million for a total of roughly about $5 million. Original projections. Then taking it to a worst case scenario, if we receive no unexpended budget authority back, which is about $1 million. The loss to the county can be somewhere between $5 and $7 million. Well, we've had a few months of experience. And at this point, expenditures are at par or at status quo or at benchmark. So what I mean by that is we are not experiencing we are not experiencing a more than expected expenditure spending of unexpended budget authority. So our expenditures are relatively at benchmark. Revenues, however, over the last five years, we've received generally about 27% of our revenues. You're at about 42%, which is a 5% reduction. 3% came in April. So the trend
That's what, then, probably most likely, that's what we're doing.
Yeah, okay. Hey, Judge? Oh, thank you.
April and May shot up to about 5% below rev, revenue expectations. So at this point, that's about $2 million. Unless we cover, we can expect at least a $2 million reduction in revenues by the end of the year. So with revenues down about 2%, but expenditures holding flat. If if we continue to hold on to our unexpended budget authority and only a continued reduction in revenue, we expect somewhere at this point in time to be between $2 and $4 million in cash shortfall for this year. So the projection of revenue, of cash reduction through the end of the year is not 5 million plus. It's somewhere between $2 and $4 million dollars at this time. But a lot of things depend on how that comes together. I don't know, October's property taxes are going to, so right now, taxes are minimally off $100 to $200,000. Other revenue streams for the Treasurer's Office are minimally off only a couple of percentage points. Sales taxes dramatically above what we projected in shortfalls. And that's, I believe, due to online sales as opposed to retail sales. So we've somewhat recouped some of our potential sales tax losses by having the ability to capture online sales tax revenues. So the projection at this time, if sales tax continues to show the resilience that it has, meaning it's not dropping as precipitously as we thought, and the October to property taxes don't show precipitous downfall, then we should see somewhere between $2 and $4 million in cash outflow by the end. That's the cash forecast.
Well, I know for me, I'm not going to Thurston County, so Mason County is getting my money because ordering online, I'm having a lot of fun.
Any questions? Okay, next item, staff reclass and realignment requests. So we've had a number of realignment and reclassification requests. Is a result of what the Commission followed on in the last couple of weeks. The ERNR restructure and reorganization. As it reflected in the organization of public health in ERNR, precipitous amount of work that was removed from the ERNR department. That moved into the facilities department. And as a result, our facilities manager is having to do additional functions and responsibilities to manage the ERNR component in So we have a reclass request for the facilities manager to go from a range 30, no, sorry, from a range 29 to a range 38. And we submitted all the paperwork two or three weeks ago and are now requesting authority for making that change.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Trask, not for me. I would be interested, I know Commissioner Netherlands had raised some concerns about this. If he's still on regarding whether or not those have been satisfied.
Yes, I spoke with Frank and you know, I am comfortable with moving forward. I want to make sure what we do is, is the same that we treat everybody. I do still have some reserves with it. Because I know what my discussions were when this thing was first created and we first moved up in this position. I do want to to stress though that being fair across the board is important as we're looking at some of these other ones if we're going to take care of within our own structure. I don't know, it's a hard one for me, but I will be supportive and be okay with moving it on to the agenda.
Thank you. The next one is in regards to the Administrator of Juvenile Court. And that is also a reclass.
Hey Frank, before we do that, can I ask you a question first? Leo had been mentioning, I attended the Audit Committee. Leo had mentioned about taking care of some of our inventory. I'd be a lot more comfortable if we also make sure that that is put underneath Kelly to do that on the physical parts of the inventory where the, the documenting of the financial part will be done through Leo's office and the Auditor's Office. But it's important, I think, that he also takes care of that on his end underneath his facilities.
For the general fund?
Yeah, well, you can ask Leo. Leo has a better explanation. I just want to make sure because they're trying to figure out who's covering what. And if we're going to have that position that way, he should be covering that.
Okay, I'll work with Leo to add that in. So the next item was in the Superior has requested to reclass the Administrator Juvenile Court Administration and has submitted documentation to the effect of how that position has changed. It has taken on a number of responsibilities from other positions that have been eliminated or furloughed as well as additional responsibilities that were not part of that function previously. So as a result of that, Union Resources is prepared to support approving a reclass from a range 37, step five, to a range 40, step three. The original request was to arrange much higher than that. But given the status of most Mason County employees relative their comparables, HR considered reducing the request so that the comparables relative to other county employees are reciprocal or at the same level as other Mason County positions within our non-represented structure.
So originally, it was a range 30. So right now, currently, it's a range 37. The previous request for, was for 43? But you're asking now for a 40?
Yes, I'm being conscious of where other Mason County unrepresented salaries are relative comparables. This would fall in a range 40.
Do we have other, any other questions?
No questions for me.
No.
Can we move forward?
Yeah.
And then the last one is the request by the Appraiser for a second Appraiser Analyst. Currently, the budget only approves a one Appraiser Analyst in that department. So we're suggesting that that be pushed back to the Appraisers Office as a budgetary request to either change one of the positions that they currently have to a Appraiser Analyst.
Oh, you went away, Frank.
Sorry. Or add an extra position within their department. So that one would be a, have a conversation during budgeting because position control does not allow for a second Appraiser Analyst currently.
That works for me.
I'm good. Randy's nodding.
Yeah, okay. So next, we have purchases of county property. And we deferred this the last time we met, asking for the property cheats from the real estate broker. He has submitted those for Commissioner Netherlands' review. However, on Sunday, we received another proposal on one of the parcels. The parcel that is had a proposal of $4,000 on it. That was the East Hillcrest Drive property. We received an offer for $5,000 on that parcel on Sunday afternoon.
If I may, now that we've reached the 30 days, and I'd like to put it in our policy again, bring that up again, I'd like to put that in our policy for future properties. Now that we've reached the 30 days, I'm comfortable with accepting the $35,000 on the one parcel. The other one, though, we now have two. I'd like to have our Realtor go back and ask for their highest and best since they are competing offers.
I will do that.
If the other Commission agree.
Yeah, that's good with me.
Yeah, I think that's great.
So the next item is Coronavirus Relief Fund CARES Act funding and a follow-up. So we had a briefing two weeks ago to discuss how to handle the CARES Act funding, which by the way, we received a contract Which, by the way, we received a contract from the Department of Commerce last week for the three point eight two one million dollars. And the open questions we had were in regards to how to distribute those funds and how to allocate those. The board asked that we go back to the EDC and ask them for a list of their businesses in Mason County that did not was that were not awarded under the CDBG program. They supplied that list this morning, which I forwarded to the commission earlier this morning. We also have some changes to the current funding proposals. And so I'll quickly read through those, just the changes. They were to eliminate the NeoGov, the paperless recruiting system for a hundred and six thousand dollars. It was determined that Munis will be able to service that for the county in its next upgrade. And we've already got the module, so we're going to use Munis to facilitate that for us. The other one was to eliminate Executime. There that's a Munis software upgrade that we would need to buy, but we would be incapable of implementing that by October thirtieth. There are just too many things within Munis that are required to be accomplished prior to implementing Executime. We have a an upgrade that we need to do. We have crosswalks and general ledger modifications. It just would not allow us to do that upgrade. Times that were added were another fifty thousand dollars worth of additional supplies for COVID preparations preparedness. Last week or two weeks ago, the board suggested that we grant twenty-five thousand to the EDC to assist the board in the distribution of grant and grant funds. We're suggesting to add two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for a body scanner in the jail. That would eliminate jail frisking, in-person frisking of jail inmates. This would be a touchless full body and body interior scanning capability. The courts brought forward their need for the oversized courtrooms of about a hundred thousand dollars worth of JAWS equipment. So that would bring the costs eligible under the CRF funds to two million one hundred and thirty-five thousand, leaving about a million eight hundred, sorry, a million six hundred and eighty-six thousand available for distribution and allocation to businesses as grants. We talked previously about how that would occur. One of the options were to allocate a certain allotment by district. Another was to allocate a certain allotment or allocate it all to the EDC. And another was to allocate it based on a allowable eligible cost analysis by the five different cost categories within the governor's proclamation. To say a million dollars for businesses, a million dollars for medical, a million dollars for capital improvements. Or there is a contract that was supplied to the board last week where the board can make a determination from an application put forward by a business to allocate to the remaining funds after the county reviews or the board reviews, who would be eligible to use those funds. The question we have is, A, to develop the allocation mechanism for the different expenses? Or B, can we how does the board want to distribute and allocate funds to businesses?
As for myself, I I trust the EDC. I think they know the businesses. They visited, they visited with the businesses frequently, and I would trust them to go ahead and distribute that money.
Yeah, for me, you know, I'm uncomfortable using the prioritize list that they provided to get some, to get an initial round of relief out to the businesses. And then if we want to have further conversations about refining the process, I'd be open to that, but I'm I've looked at the list that they sent over and I'm, I would be fine getting that initial round of funding out based on that.
The initial thing that they just sent us, for some reason about that, is that better?
Oh, much better.
Yeah, based on the what they sent over, I'm comfortable moving forward with that. Again, when I would like to look at a different structure for any further monies that we're going to put out. And I definitely believe that it's our responsibilities to keep some touch on that and to make sure that the businesses that we know better than anybody, because it is our districts and we are out there, that we have some type of an input with that and we work with those businesses to get them to become a part of it. But what was just sent over to us today, I'm comfortable with moving forward with that as long as it's done equally. It was given to us based on population. It's important to me that it also be given out according to population.
So can I, do we want to go ahead and offer the grant application that I submitted in the briefing documents to put it onto our website and ask businesses to submit requests by filling out those forms and then let the board decide how to move forward with that? Or continue the conversation after we've received a number of applications?
But I think if we're going to do that, I think it would be important for the businesses that would be applying to know the process that they're going to be evaluated and using. So I think whatever, I think we have to decide before we move forward with an application, how we're going to evaluate them, I guess is my point.
And I would suggest that as well. Otherwise, it kind of leaves it open-ended for the businesses. And the two decisions we have is to let the EDC come back with recommendations or to somehow do that internally and let the board make decisions.
I guess the, I guess my my main question with that would be what's our internal bandwidth for you know, going through the applications, if we receive ten or receive a hundred or we receive five hundred? You know, what's our, what's our staff ability to, to, you know, kind of wade through those and then prioritize them? Maybe not exactly, but maybe in a similar way that we've seen the EDC do based on on their process. I just, you know, give me a sense for what that kind of workload would do. Because there may be, in my mind, higher priority things I'd like to see our support services staff working on now versus wading through grant applications.
Can I jump in for one second on that? I, I like the idea of still having the EDC involved throughout that whole process. It's the end result that I'm talking about that I'd like to see us be more involved in. The other part is the, what they send is is based off of an application for a different granting cycle with different restrictions and requirements. I'd like to see us talk about what type of other options we want to have open to allow for some of these other companies to come in and be able to apply. They could only work with, on what they presented us, they can only work with what they were given. And they've had very strict parameters that people applied that were outside the parameters, but at least they applied even with those restrictions on. Other ones may have if we change that.
Yeah, well, I think Commissioner Netherland, to your point, I mean, I think that's what I liked about the the grant application was that I think it was less restrictive. I think it could broaden out the pool of applicants. But still ask them to show that there's been a financial hardship. You know, and that there's a need there so that we're being able to prioritize that. And I like being able to kind of compile you know, that information through the EDC as well. I just think, you know, let's cast maybe a broader net. And but but still maintain the integrity of a of an evaluation process that that can show need. Especially since we're going to have to front this money, you know, on the, on the on the granting side before we get reimbursed from the CARES Act.
And because I'd still like to see us also go public when we're giving out money since it's coming directly through us.
Right, I I agree. And I do think that the other was very restrictive. There's a lot of new businesses I know in my, in my district that were, did not they weren't eligible because they were so new. So I like opening it up, making it, making it a little bit broader, too.
The grant application form that we submitted for your review says that you have to have been in business since January one of two thousand and twenty. Your business must be located in Mason County. You have to have fifty or fewer employees with a preference granted to those with twenty-five or less employees.
Now, on here, it says full-time employees. Do we have, can we take out the full-time?
Sure, this is up to the board how they would like to set it up. So we could say fifty or fewer employees with a preference for twenty-five or fewer. Then has your business received any previous COVID financing assistance? And if so, how much? And then the only thing that's not on here that I heard brought up was somehow show financial hardship, which would be a review of some either tax returns or financial statements of a business. So that would be added. And then that would be the application that we would put forward, that the EDC would evaluate for criteria.
Yeah, I like the word change or taking out the full-time.
Okay. Any other change?
No, Commissioner, our question on that is your, is your goal to make it so that if they have you know, many more part-time employees that they can't qualify? Or are you trying to get it to where they have you know, seventy-five half-time employees that it comes to half of that?
I'm just saying employees. We have so many new businesses, restaurants even, that are, that have been around for decades. And many of their employees are not full-time. They're they're part-time.
Yes.
So I don't want to shove them out of the mix by saying that they're full-time.
Yeah, and I agree because that's why I was asking the question. So what we're talking about is, is total FTE hours or something, maybe. Because you could have a bunch of half-time people and it, you know, two of them that are half-time comes out to one, so we don't want to cut them out. You're right. I agree. I have the same thing with a lot of our other industries that we have, the restaurants really deal with that.
Yeah, yeah, there's quite a few.
Yeah, I think probably the easiest way to handle that is just take out the full-time and just leave it as employees. Simplest way.
So what I will do is modify the grant application form, submit it to the commissioners one more time, and then we can forward it on to the EDC for their processing.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Just before we move off of this issue, so that's that initial round that we're going to distribute based off of the list that the EDC brought forward. We'll vote on that next Thursday or next Tuesday. Is that the plan?
Yes.
That and then distribute the money that way. And then will the money again, just since we, since, because, you know, we have to front it, will it come directly through us or will it be, will it be passed through to them via the EDC? Or how does that, how do you envision that part of it working?
The county would have to front the cash to the EDC to distribute. And then we would request for reimbursement with the Department of Commerce in our as soon as we've spent it, then we will ask for reimbursement from the EDC.
Okay, so the plan is this would be given to the EDC then to distribute to the businesses that we approved on that list, not us directly to the businesses.
Correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Leo, can I ask a question?
Yes.
So if we do it this way, I had heard at one point in time that we had to write the checks to the businesses so that we could track it. Is that still the case or has that changed?
I would, I'd probably have to look into it more.
Okay, I think I would, I would like to maybe have that answered as soon as possible.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Commissioner, I make another recommendation, looking at the list, it's something I had brought up before. You know, because there is so many in, in the, in, you know, Commissioner Trask, your district there, you've got a couple that will come out of your money that I think should come out separately from the whole county such as i Fiber One and the Journal. And I'd like to see, still see something sent out to maybe Mason Web TV. But those cover the whole county, and I think this would also free up some extra money for, for some of the smaller businesses that are needy in your community.
I appreciate that. Sure, the community appreciates that, too.
Well, and remember, we had that discussion last week. I don't see how anybody, even though it is located in Shelton, i Fiber One, you know, that you can't really just call that a Shelton. One, same with the Journal and again, same with Mason Web TV, but it would take, you know, Kevin also to agree, I think. How do you feel about that, Kevin?
Yeah, I guess I don't, I don't have a particular feeling one way or another. I'm fine either way. My only concern would be how quickly the EDC could then replace those two with whatever the next two businesses would be for District Three. So as long as they can get to that, as long as they have like two businesses that are in the chamber for District Three, I'd be fine with that. But otherwise, you know, I don't, I don't really have an opinion.
Yeah, I just want to see all the businesses covered. I don't, to me, it doesn't matter what district they're in, they're still in Mason County. And so I, I say, let's just run with it.
Okay, and then we'll bring next Monday back at briefing what the ultimate results were. And a final update on the grant application. Next item we have is the financial policy and the financial policy updates. For that, I'll let Jennifer speak.
Thank you, Frank. So we adopted the financial policy for the county in January of two thousand and nineteen and proposed changes to the policy were briefed to the board on March sixteenth of two thousand and twenty. And since then, the policy was passed around to all departments within the county. And we have several more changes to brief the board on before we ask that the policy be be updated for adoption. So the changes since March sixteenth include under Section Nine Revenue, Wage Overpayments, a section in there for debts due to the county for the overpayment of wages will be recovered by following the processes in RCW forty-nine point four eight point two hundred and forty-nine point four eight point two one zero. And also a sentence was added under the, under the collections section within revenue, just emphasizing the importance of collecting on past due accounts. It is imperative that departments practice due diligence to collect past due accounts as the writing off of bad debt may be viewed as a gift of public funds if collection actions are not implemented. if collection actions are not implemented. And the last change is under the payroll section. We added, in order to ensure countywide payroll and benefit record consistency, each employee change requires a personal action form in Munis, and then went on to include all, you know, examples of different changes, employee changes. And we also added as an attachment to the policy, an email from Tony Nelson, MRC Finance Consultant, on her take on paid administrative leave and the importance of it. There's also a sentence that I forgot to mention. The paid administrative leave shall be defined as a temporary leave from a job assignment with pay and benefits intact. So that was added under the payroll section. And that was recommended by Tony Nelson, MRC Finance Consultant. So with those changes, are there any any questions or comments on them from the board?
Jennifer, I have a quick question for you. I know that there were some concerns raised by Under Sheriff Adams. Can can you or I know he's on here and maybe get an update on the status of those conversations?
Yeah, so the concern was under the paid administrative leave that, you know, it that it not be reported in the Munis financial system in order to protect the employees. But I mean, we're not asking for a reason in the financial policy. You know, a reason for the paid administrative leave. So I'm not sure exactly what what the other concerns are with that. I know that there's a requirement to report the leave correctly and accurately. And if we're not, if we're not reporting paid administrative leave, there's a possibility that it could be viewed as a gift of public funds. And, you know, inaccurate reporting of records. It's also a concern for for public record requests because paid administrative leave is not exempt from those requests. The reason for the leave is exempt, but not the actual who's on paid administrative leave. So we if we get those requests, we have to, you know, from the public, we have to respond to those requests. And if we're not, you know, if we don't have the information, then we're possibly responding to them inaccurately. Another concern on the reporting side is that employees may be being paid inaccurately or or being overpaid. For example, you know, during COVID, there was the extra five percent pay that the employees received. They were were working in the office. And, you know, there's the possibility that some if the employees are on paid administrative leave, that they're getting that extra five percent pay. So so anyway, does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Yeah.
Any other concerns by any individual in regards to how to treat paid administrative leave?
Yeah, I still do, obviously. Commissioners, do you want to entertain my my opinion here?
Yeah.
So originally, this came up last year as an issue. And when we originally inquired about why this was necessary, we were told that the this was something that State Auditor's Office was concerned about and something that they wanted to wanted to audit. Last year, when the state auditors came, I specifically sat down with the auditor and asked them if this was an issue, and I explained the entire thing to them. They told me that, no, it was not an issue for them. They really didn't care about it. Other than if we had a policy about it, then, of course, they would want to make sure that we were adhering to the policy. So for them, it wasn't an issue at that time. So I'm not sure why that was used as a reason. Overall, I've got a few general concerns that I am concerned about the employees' privacy in some of these issues. I I understand the public disclosure argument. However, our office fills about three thousand public disclosures a year. So if there was ever a need to know if we had somebody on administrative leave, that I'm certain we can fulfill that that public disclosure request if it was out there. Our public disclosure person here is concerned that you're creating a document that can now be used basically as a as a tool by which to see how many people are on administrative leave and then start digging into the reasons for that. And I think that the employee privacy is a real concern there. We did check with several other departments to see how they handled it outside of the county. We received three responses back. All of those responses varied a little bit, but ultimately what it came down to in the end was that the individual office was responsible for tracking people's time and notifying the county of what that time was. So those are those are my general concerns. I I don't know that creating paperwork for the sake of creating paperwork is anything I ever want to do. The fact of the matter is, in county government, it's a death by a thousand cuts. We have one form and another form, and you just keep adding things until the bureaucracy gets to be uncontainable. And from what I can tell, this seems to be a solution seeking a problem more than anything else.
Commissioner, if if I can just add one thing that I don't think Jennifer mentioned, that there is a cost to the county in having employees on administrative leave that isn't recorded in the payroll system. And we we pay L and I tax on employees and and, you know, frankly, in the sheriff's department, that's expensive and when employees are working. And if they're not working, we we don't have a responsibility to pay that. But payer, if if there isn't, if payroll doesn't know that employees on administrative leave, we're going to pay that fee even though it's not due.
Commissioners, if I can, I'd like to chime in a little bit also. You know, on the Audit Committee, the issue that I have, I understand what the Under Sheriff is saying. But here's the problem that I'm facing. I have a Treasurer's Office that thinks that this is the proper way to go. I have an Auditor's Office that thinks it's the proper way to go. I have a Budget Department thinks it's the proper way to go. And these are the people that we are supposed to support when it comes to these financial type issues. So it's hard for me to 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 have a different opinion than the ones that are actually in that specific part of our industry, especially something different based on my feelings. So I I'd like to say that I completely support what these these departments have requested, and they believe that it's the best and safest thing to do for the county. It's not personal. It's just the way it is.
Well, perhaps I could get a better definition of what it is that work means then, because if I have somebody on administrative leave for an officer-involved shooting, for example, yes, they're not working their patrol shift. However, they're meeting with their attorneys. They're doing their statements for the investigation. They're going to the crime scenes to do walkthroughs. They're meeting with the investigators. They're doing a whole bunch of things. It's called administrative leave because that's what we've called it forever. Is this a situation where we just need to be calling it something else? Yeah, granted, they're not doing their primary duties, but they are doing something else. If employee is required to be at home, but they're subject to subpoena, they're subject to response to the court and responding to processes of the office, are they on administrative leave or are they working? Because again, perhaps this is a definition issue.
So what do they call it in in other counties for the offices that you checked with under Sheriff? What did they have a different term for it?
No, I mean, generally, it's always been called administrative leave because I guess that's just the title it's been given. I don't know. But specifically in the in the officer-involved shooting or a critical incident, yes, they're put on administrative leave by title. But the fact of the matter is, they're doing all kinds of work that isn't related necessarily to patrol duties, but certainly it's related to the investigation.
Commissioners, you know, I I I'd like an opportunity to review the information that the Under Sheriff has received from the other counties to see if there is a workaround here that would get us to a better consensus than what we currently have. If there's a way we could revisit this in a week, and Under Sheriff, if you could forward that information, I'd appreciate it. That'd be my preference. We've waited. We've waited since March sixteenth. What's another week, right?
Yeah, definitely.
Yep, that would be great.
Yeah, be happy to do that. And I'd be happy to talk to any of you if you'd like.
Let's get that far, Travis. Let's just.
I'll I'll pull it together with our team and then work with Travis to bring it back next Monday.
Could we also share with the with the Audit Committee so they can take a quick look at it also? Because they may have a different solution. The question that was posed is a little different than how I was viewing this with how the Under Sheriff posed that question. I am wondering if it's just a a matter of verbiage. Because if you're actually still working, you're not literally do out doing nothing. There's a difference.
You're not on vacation, right?
Yeah.
Definitely not.
It might be just what it's called or how it's how it's coded. But let's let the Audit Committee take a look at it and also.
Paid administrative leave is generally a you get to go home and wait for a phone call. So it might be a terminology issue. So we'll bring it back after the Audit Committee has reviewed it as well.
Thank you.
Last item we have is to bring a resolution forward to modify the PUD privilege tax distribution. We had budgeted or anticipated receiving seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and we will actually be receiving seven hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. And we'd like to put that on for the July seventh agenda.
Good with me.
Good with me.
That's all we have. Anything from the Commissioners?
Not at the moment.
Not right now. I'm sure I'll call if I do.
Frank, what about the money for the EDC? We did not bring that up.
I put I it was included in the CARES Act conversation, the twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, but we're we're agreed to put forward because remember, Commissioner Trask still had a question about that. And since we didn't bring it up, I just want to make sure that she was comfortable.
I'm good, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that's all we had.
All right, great. Anything? Anything else for for Frank?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, let's move on to our the WSU Extension Office, Noxious Weed Control. We don't hear audio.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Lisa Dewall, and I'm filling in for Patricia Grover. She had an emergency this morning and asked me to attend. She is requesting an hourly wage increase for two extra help employees that she has. One is currently working full-time for the summer, and she is requesting an increase from sixteen fifty per hour to eighteen. The second extra help employee is working two days per week through July, and she's asking for an increase from fifteen dollars to sixteen dollars an hour. This is due to an increase in responsibilities, knowledge of program and the processes. The extra help employees are paid by grants, and the funding is already in the current 2020 budget.
Grant-funded in the budget. I'm good.
Okay.
Doesn't that normally come to H R? Because raises without also process.
I spoke with H R and they said it just required a briefing and approval from the Commissioners.
There you go.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you.
All right, so we're moving on to District Court.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. We had our material, I think, for a little more than maybe not quite two weeks. And so I'm not going to go through and repeat everything that's in here because we can all read. Just kind of want to update a little bit about where we're going. The Supreme Court, which was actually surprising to me a little bit, actually, within some gave some timeline as to their order about how we're going to start restarting jury trials. And we are looking now in July, half of July sixth, restarting jury trials. And we're looking into it. I'm going on the assumption that we're going to be making use of Building Ten, but I don't believe it's going to be ready in July. If I'm wrong, someone can please say, hey, Steele, you're wrong again. Or or possibly even August. So what we have done is we've looked at our courtrooms. And really, at most, we can hold about seven jurors in LO two, which is our extra courtroom. And at least tentatively, what we're doing is looking at doing jury selection there with the idea that they be brought in in groups of seven as opposed to the entire panel. We don't have any place right now where there's space to do the take care of the entire panel and maintain social distancing. That means the trials are going to take longer. And I think that's consistent with Superior Courts probably told you as well. I think that's what Judge Goodell's told me. They're going to take longer just to pick the jury. So in order for all this to happen, we made, dare I say, our wish list. And it very much tracks in my mind with what Superior Court is asking for. One of the things we're putting into it, however, additionally, is give you a heads up about the pro temp situation because one difference between District Court and Superior Court is that I'm it for District Court. Superior Court has three judges and one commissioner. So anytime we're doing anything that involves more than one judge, either because the number of cases and number of calendars are running or cases where I've either recused or been affidavited, or cases where we're going to need to have a pro temp judge. And I think and no one's said, I don't know what I'm talking about yet. But my impression is it's kind of like a tsunami, which which essentially means that when it's starting to come in, all the water sucked out into the ocean. And so what happened here is we got a much larger number of jury trials in the first part, two thousand twenty, in the first part, two thousand nineteen, which meant we were on track to exceed our limit or budget. And we were planning on doing a briefing at some point. However, what's happened since that time is the COVID hit. All the trials have been continued. Right now, I think, not counting the AOP case, the case I'm not going to hear, we had six confirm on for trial in February, and we have another hearing set on this coming Thursday to determine when and how we're going to be handling those. I think if I'm not correct, if I heard correctly from Tanya, and Pat, see if I'm wrong, by all means, correct me, that we have about a hundred cases set in August that are still currently set for jury trial. Now, these cases are also set for a pre-trial and a trial readiness for the most part. And so we expect that to be winnowed out. But we started off with thirty-five trials, I believe, in July, and we came down with six. So for District Court to handle six to eighteen trials in a month is going to be a very phenomenal amount. So it's very important that keep that in mind and anything we can do to Be ready to help supply some more pro tem money would be. Necessary. The alternative is going to be that. To the extent that we can, we're going to have to do some things saying, okay, we have to do the trials. We have to keep the criminal cases on track. We're not going to do small claims cases. We're not going to do, we'll do the mediation for those. Because they're being paid for out of a fee surcharge. But we're not going to be doing those trials. We're not going to be doing the name change or a lot of the other types of things. Because they're not going to be based on any kind of speedy trial rule or what have you. And it is somewhat similar to Superior Court, which they say, look, no divorce trials or this. Because we have to get these criminal cases cleared out or what have you. So I'm just putting people on notice that that may be. An issue. And we are making requests for additional pro tem money. We're also have a list of equipment, which you already have. A list for. That we've asked, and essentially, the reason we're asking for it. Is in order to keep the courtrooms clear. Minimally populated and also at the same time. Comply with the mandate from the Supreme Court that we maintain the health. Concerns, you know, social distancing and all this other stuff. I don't see the court being able to lift the restrictions that we have currently put in place. As far as entry into the courtroom. Our courtrooms are not large enough to, if we keep a six person distance, they have more than six to seven. People besides the court staff. In the courtrooms. So that means we're going to need to keep Zoom going. We're also going to need to make use of LL one, which is our main courtroom more. And in order to do, have the flexibility to do encusties, for example, leave them in the. Video booth, we're going to have to be able to have a means to. Link up with Zoom, and that means, as I understand it, that JAS. Is what we need, JTR, which is what we have in LO two will not work. So we put that in there. We're also going to be facing challenges. Early on, and I think it was in the February or early March, we ordered three video. Webcams. They're supposed to be here by late May. They weren't. They're supposed to be here by June twenty third. They're not. Patsy said they're supposed to come in today. She would not take me up on a bet. For me betting that they would not be here today. She's a chicken. But she's also smart, so. Because I'm not really convinced we're going to get those. Those are very scarce to come by. And right now, what we're doing. Is before everything happened, I bought one and was reimbursed by the. How the court budget, and that's what we have in our courtroom. The one I'm on right now is my own personal property. I'm essentially lending it. Until we get our webcams. Brought in. So. So as I said, we've gone through everything, and I've also put an explanation for it in writing. So unless anybody wants me to pretend like I'm in the Senate filibuster. You've seen the list, so I'd be more inclined to ask if you have questions about what we're requesting and try to answer those.
Judge, maybe not a question for you as much as it is a question for either Kelly or Frank. To just kind of comment on the facilities side of these requests. Since we've now heard from you and your court.
I'm sorry. I happened to be on the phone for a moment.
People do that all the time when I'm talking. I don't blame them one bit.
So Frank, just I was just asking for. Kind of a comment from you or Kelly regarding facilities. Aspect of District Court's request, now that we've heard from both District Court and Superior Court.
So we met with architects last week and are working towards. The final draft of a proposed oversized courtroom layout. The seismic retrofit has been submitted to the city. For permitting, we should know within the next couple of days or the week. As to the. Approval of that permit. The tenant improvement work to create the oversized. Courtroom will be another application to the city. A. August timeline is very. How can I say? Is is going to be difficult to meet. A late August, early September timeline is more probable than not. And. Our plan is to, as soon as we get a permit for seismic, start that work immediately. And then start right behind that with TI work. Because the two don't conflict. Seismic work is done on the perimeter. And the TI work is being done on the interior of the building, so both can work concurrently. But August is just too ambitious a timeline. Late August, early September is more realistic.
And I know the city is working very well. They're eager to help, so I appreciate that as well.
They're very, very eager to help. We've talked to them about stormwater mitigation, which was always part of the original plan. And before they can give us a final occupancy, we would have had to do stormwater. But in this exigent circumstance. They're considering whether to forego the stormwater permit. For the emergency operation of that facility. And in that regard, they're doing great. They're helping us an awful lot.
If I may jump in for a second about the. The the final plans, are you anticipating having one large jury assembly area?
Half the building will probably be jury assembling.
So that will be, and again, I I get it, but that's one other thing why. Why we're looking also to be able to do the trials in the main building. Is because of the fact Superior Court has its own backlog of trials. And we're going to be in a situation where we're. When I say conflict, I don't mean like, you know, you dirty rotten scandals you, but we're going to have time conflicts. When they're going to be needing to select a jury, and we're going to be needing to select a jury. I have spoken with Judge Greer about use of the city. The problem there is he believes there won't be a problem with. The city court being made available, the space itself, not the personnel. For conducting the trials, but he doesn't believe the city is going to go along with use of the. City Hall for assembling jurors to pick a jury. Had that conversation with him this week. So. Getting it back to our list, and that is some of the things that were frankly. You know, why we do need the upgrades so we can continue to. Function as well as we do. I'll go ahead and mute myself because apparently that does mess up with the video or the audio, rather. But does anybody else have any other questions?
If I may add to that, Judge. There is sufficient room there. To facilitate two separate jury assembly areas of up to fifty individuals. So we can isolate. The one large area into two separate. One for the District Court utilization, and then one for Superior Court utilization at your time needs.
Right, because there's two extra rooms. Correct, that that could be used for jury assembly?
There's one very large room, about twelve thousand square feet. But maintaining social distancing of about fifty. Individuals only requires about five thousand square feet. So we can split that up. The two rooms that you're looking at are two large rooms for jury deliberation. So that two juries can be deliberating at the same time.
Okay.
And just to put it in perspective, prior to all this happening. In LL one, which is our main courtroom. We could accommodate a jury panel about thirty six people. For jury selection and. And sometimes we need more. Most of the time we can get by with twenty four, so. But the situation is with the social distancing and all that. As I said, six or seven, so. That's going to really slow things down because what we're going to have to do is work out procedures to bring them in and ship in waves. So. So that, again, it goes to the things that we're requesting.
Frank, if we.
Maybe I was misunderstood. What I meant to say was, we can have a jury assembly room. For up to fifty people, for one for District Court and a separate one for Superior Court. Then we would also have two separate jury deliberation rooms. One where you could accommodate seven, six. Jurors, and then one where we could accommodate twelve.
Right. And Frank, I got that. It was more responding to. Sharon, when she asked if some of these other rooms could be used for jury, what I understood could be used for jury. The jury panel itself, and they would be too small under our current situation.
And Frank, it might be helpful if District Court could get to could see what the layout plan ideas are, because that way we might understand it a little more.
You have a set of drawings.
I don't. The only set of drawings I have is one that shows one big open room.
And two courtrooms, actually. Yeah, that's that's the drawing that we're working on.
Okay, so that big open room would be split into two or separated for two. I got it. Okay, thank you.
Patsy, I will bring over a copy of what I have later on today.
I appreciate it, Kelly.
What we have that we're working on is draw modifications of that set of drawings. And we should have something. About ninety percent complete within the next day or two.
Thank you. Great. Any other questions?
I I do have one more question for the judge is what are the. Technological costs. That you're looking to include in this. Because I don't have that in the list of CRF funding requests.
Hold on a minute. I thought we had totaled it up here.
What technological cost per like?
JAVs.
Well, I gave you a, I gave you a a total breakdown of the different costs. And. The one with the JAVs, there should be a spreadsheet that has District Court that shows our current expenditure needs. Totalling what we've already spent on COVID issues of twenty two thousand ninety five, ninety six. And then there's another one that shows the future needs of current right now needs is Zoom. We purchased and had been reimbursed for. I am. JAVs integration, we need two of those, one for both. JAV systems and the JAVs itself. Which is fifty thousand. The total of everything was seventy three thousand six hundred and sixteen ten. You don't have that spreadsheet?
I do. I just want to make sure that was your final number. Because I understand that there had been some communication with IT. And I don't know if this, if that. Is current set of what your needs are.
I believe this is what came out of that conversation with IT.
Okay, then I can put that into our list. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Pat had one question for you because I. We aren't really just. Finalize it, but I think we did speak about needing a partition off. Some of the, some of the workstations up in the clerk's office.
Right, and I have a, I had a message into Kelly. For him to call me about that. So Kelly, I don't know if you're still on, but.
I will come over. I will come over today and get with you. I do have lots of partitions.
Okay.
Essentially, what we're looking at is. We have certain workstations here that are not separated by six feet, so we need to put some kind of. A barrier between those workstations.
Patsy, go over to Superport there and look at them, and that's the same thing.
I already have. That's why I want to talk to you.
Perfect. I'll see you this afternoon.
All right.
Okay. So anyway. Anybody else have any questions on me?
Not for me.
Have a good day, everybody.
Thanks, Judge.
Thank you.
All right, do we need to take a break? Or do we want to move on to community services? Are we good?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, let's move on to community services. Dave, are you there?
Yes, I am unmuted. Let me see if I can roll this up. I think I sit in the dark here.
All right, do we need to take a roll call real quick, too, just because things have changed a bit? All right, I will go through, and that way we don't talk over each other. We have Frank. We have Dave Wyndham, Commissioner Shutey. Commissioner Netherlands. We have a phone number. I'm not sure who that phone number is.
Kel's on the phone.
Okay, thanks, Kel.
On the phone.
Thank you, Kel.
Yep.
All right, Dave, take her away.
Okay, so we're going to start with Kel.
Hello.
Hi, Kel.
We had, so Kurt Eck, who is our building code enforcement officer, he put in his notice and his last day is tomorrow. And we are hoping to refill his position with a building inspector slash plans examiner slash code enforcement as necessary, so. Replace the position with a building inspector, two, three, or four. And then be able to utilize that position to fill in where we have the most need in our building department. So. Right now, it could be an inspections, but it also hoping to have someone who has some experience in plans examining, so. If we fall behind on the plans examining side, we could utilize that person to fill in the gaps. Our planning code enforcement officer is. Jamie Martin, she does a terrific job, and I think she will be able to manage. Code enforcement on the building side with the building department's assistance. But being able to fill in those, you know, notice of violations, et cetera. On behalf of the building department as necessary. And so we don't feel the need at this time to have a an exclusive code enforcement officer on the building side and would prefer. To hire a building inspector slash plans examiner.
So this, is this a? So you're changing the description. Does this have to go before HR before coming to us?
I don't think so, because we're not changing the, I don't know, how does that typically work, Dave? Do you know how, have you done that in the past as far as? Because we haven't had a code enforcement specific since twenty fifteen, so I know Kurt was kind of the first one to do that, I believe.
Kel, Frank is online. He can answer that question from HR.
Okay, thanks.
Well, yes, I would ask that it goes in front of. Of the HR department, just to make sure that we've got. All of our checklist items taken care of.
Okay, and I have talked to Dawn about that, so we've gotten the most updated. Job descriptions and such.
Right.
I would just ask that you push it back through Dawn.
Okay.
That she's got the correct. She's got all her checklist taken care of.
Right, okay, great.
I would also add another question, and we don't have to answer this question right now because it's obviously going to go through another layer of review, but. Just for the commission, how this. Fits in with the hiring freeze that we've asked for. Just sort of philosophically how. We intend to approach that going forward as as positions like this. Open up, so. Just just some food for thought, not necessarily looking for. One way or another right now, but something we need to be mindful of.
I thought that was that that same question, so I'm glad you brought that up.
And that's part of our checklist is to go down those kinds of questions. So, yes. We'll be bringing that forward.
Thank you.
Kel, next item. And that's the.
I. Don't have another item unless unless I do, and I don't have it in front of me. Oh, I I do, don't I? It's on a, sorry. Behind my other page here. So I did have a. Behind my other page here. So I did have a rezone application that went forward to the planning advisory commission on. That was Monday, June 22nd. Uh, it's for a, a 1.52 acre parcel in the Belfair urban growth area. It is split zoned. So a, the southern portion of the parcel is zoned mixed use. And the northern portion of the parcel is zoned residential. Uh, the applicant is asking that the rezone, uh, that it be rezoned entirely to mixed use. And it will, um, the successful rezone will result in a future expansion of the Mitchell lumberyard outdoor retail space. Uh, there was unanimous support from the planning advisory commission, which we now have seven full members. So it was a seven to zero vote in support, uh, of recommendation to approve the rezone application. And staff is also supporting the, uh, rezone, uh, from residential to mixed use.
Kel, this is Randy. I thought, uh, we had already established that when it's a split parcel, uh, that it's a map correction. And that, uh, basically just they're picking one or the other and making it a map correction.
Um, no, I'm, I, I haven't been involved in those discussions, but that's the way our code reads. Then it's not a map correction. Um, there are, you know, if, if say a boundary. Now this is not a result of a boundary line adjustment, but I, I know that there's been rezones when as a result of a boundary line adjustment, you get a parcel that will have a split zoning. That is not a, in, that is not an error. The rezone has to, uh, follow the boundary line adjustment. If that's the case. Um, that happened with Loudens, if you recall a couple of years.
That's not the case here, right? This one was laid over the top, uh, during the, uh, when we segregated everything out.
Right. This was not the case here. This was, uh, the southern portion is undeveloped and it was, uh, deliberately zoned mixed use. And the northern portion does have a residential structure on it and it was zoned as residential. Um, there is a future proposal to demolish the existing residential use, uh, so that the expansion of the outdoor retail space for the lumberyard can occur.
Is this two separate parcels or one?
It's one.
That's what I thought. So yeah, you might want to look at that. We, we've dealt with that before in the past and that's where we went.
Right. Right. But it, so it, it was zoned two different on one parcel. So this is, this is not considered a correction.
Okay. Well, I'm okay with moving it forward. But like I said, uh, you might want to look at that. We've dealt with that before because we had those issues. We had a couple of parcels that were right there that were split like that. Uh, and it was deemed that it was not proper to separate them that way. So you might want to look at that for the future, but I'm okay with moving this forward.
Yep, I'm good.
Okay. So it, it will be placed on the, um, or setting on the action agenda for July 7th to set a public hearing for July 28th.
Sounds good.
Any public comment that was received? Just out of curiosity.
Um, there were no public comments other than debate, uh, standard comments from Department of Ecology. Uh, just in regard to the future proposal of the demo of the residential structure.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on that?
No.
Uh, now, uh, Lydia, Choice Health Network.
Choice Health Network.
Or does it get rolled in from the previous? Yeah. Yeah, but we didn't meet them.
Oh, okay. I didn't have that one.
Okay.
Okay. So Choice Health Network, we're doing an amendment number five. This is the funding that comes forward to pay for the community coalition, the health coalition that we facilitate in the community that we've kind of been bumbling along because of COVID. But we had a meeting about a week and a half ago, the first one since COVID and got, got it restarted. And this is just their funding that comes forward to, uh, manage this coalition. For 25,000.
Good with me.
Good with me.
Babe.
All right. Next one is, uh, temporary help for substance abuse. Mobile outreach. Again, this is a brother from last week.
Yeah. So this one we've kind of put on hold. Uh, we actually had, the person wants to volunteer and not be paid at this time. Um, which is fine with us. Uh, we cleared it with her. Um, she's actually volunteered last week and was very successful. Um, the volunteer that we currently have that we've been using the last year and a half, her position ended on June, ended on June 30th. And so we were looking for a second person because we have to have two people on that mobile outreach. Um, we also have, uh, um, the Hurst grant, we have it included in the Hurst grant. If we get that in September, it'll be covered by another agency um, in the community as part of the Hurst grant. So, but we'll put this one on hold because at this time we've got somebody that stepped in to volunteer for it.
Great.
Okay. Next item, uh, comes back to me and it's, uh, health officer position. As you all know, uh, Dr. Stein is moving back east. He'll be with his family. He's given us plenty of time, but we would like to get this, uh, health officer position advertised as soon as possible. So that's what we have here. And our recommendation is we go ahead and, and look to fill this position.
Good for me.
Good for me.
Okay. Moving on. I don't know that Alex is on. Alex, are you on?
He is.
Oh, there you are.
Yeah, I'm here. Good morning, commissioners. I've got, uh, a vacancy here in our sewage advisory committee, uh, pretty straightforward. The one thing I wanted to be clear on is I was hoping for this news release to go out this week and then I'll do a reading on July 7th. If you're good with that.
Good with me.
Yep.
Any issue?
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Alex.
Okay. So the next item is, um, many services, community family health, public notice of available funding. You want to take that, Lydia?
Yeah. So Commerce is, in the last few weeks, has sent out more funding for housing, um, changes and support in housing, especially during COVID. But to go beyond that, it'll move on for, I think it's two years. So we have a lot of, and their, their turnaround time is very rapid, which is real difficult. But Todd has been working, um, with the community partners in a work group on some of these, um, to get their input from all of community partners. Um, so we have new additional funding that came forth. Um, it's called from the CARES Act. It's emergency solutions grant and new shelter program. And we will contract, we have to contract it through Mason County Public Health and then we'll be subcontracting it out um, based on the recommendations by the community as far as where funding should go. And so we have, so we have a press release for it so that we can notify everybody to apply. The priority is going to go to our current funded organizations because the, um, the turnaround is so quick. But it is open for everybody to submit. So approval for the press release to go out.
With me.
With me.
Okay. Uh, next one is Crossroads Housing and I, I must drop an apology. I was going to call Commissioner Netherlands last week and I got just bogged down with COVID and masks. And, and that whole, uh, piece of, of what, and, um, you know, Lydia and Todd have been working on this. Lydia, go ahead and I will jump in as needed here.
So, um, this is for coordinated entry proposal. Our coordinated entry lead is Crossroads Housing. Um, they've been working on the coordinated entry piece for the last couple of years. Um, this past year they worked a lot with Commerce. Commerce had a lot of recommendations of things that needed to be done. Um, North Basin Resources is the other agency in Mason County that has been sharing, um, a satellite office to do coordinated entry. There've been some, um, some bumps in the road with this. And so Crossroads put forth a proposal requesting that they could pull back, um, that piece of coordinated entry back under their umbrella and under their management with their administration, but still send out a satellite to North Mason to work in North Mason. But they also want to add in Hoodsport as well as, um, Matlock in outreaches to those two areas that aren't really being served. Um, so that the proposal is to amend the contract with Crossroads to bring the funding back into Crossroads rather than North Mason. We're sort of in the middle of a two-year contract at this point, um, and then just continue the contract with North Mason. We will not be reducing services in North Mason. The goal and, um, that Crossroads has made is they really believe they'll increase services. After looking at the work that had been done, they feel that it's been difficult to coordinate and to give the best services in, in North Mason and feel that it needs to come back under the umbrella. They have the administrative costs already covered. A lot of the pieces are already covered. They have all the resources in there. And they would just send someone out to North Mason to work. They'll have to figure out where they would locate that person, whether it would be at North Mason Resources again, or some other, one other agency in there. But that's what they're proposing.
The MPA services is backed up again. I'd like, if you don't mind, like to table this for a week and have further discussions. Uh, you and me, Dave, we never finished our discussions on this one. I know that there's some issues there.
Yeah.
I'd like to find out, but we just can't keep dropping.
Okay.
Give me a week.
All right. I'm okay with that.
Um, just, I'm fine with that, uh, too. If, uh, Lydia, if you could just maybe summarize some of the conversation from the, um, housing and behavioral health advisory board too. So the commissioners have that. Uh, we did not have a quorum. So there was no, um, you know, there was no, no action or official recommendation, but Lydia can maybe name some blanks on the conversation that that group had, um, including some of the North Mason perspective on it as well.
Yeah. Last week we had our housing behavior health meeting, um, and this was proposed and brought up to them, Crossroads' proposal. Um, Peggy Van Besker was one that was most concerned, um, at the data. Then the few number of people that had actually been served and that no one had actually been housed in the whole time, the year. Um, there were two people that were currently active and served. So there was some concern, um, from her as well as, um, other members of the board that there needs to be a shift. This has been worked on for a very long time. Um, a, a few years. It doesn't seem to be getting any better. So this is a proposal that might end up increasing services and, and, um, things to them. So they were in, they were in favor of it. But again, we didn't have a quorum to send anything forward other than they wanted to say that they were in favor of the proposal after reading it. Does that summarize?
Yeah. And then if you could just briefly talk about the number of, um, folks who have been, uh, successfully rehoused as under the current versus client served as well.
Sorry, I don't have it right in front of me. I'm not in my office. Um. So yeah, that was what I was saying. There had been no actually rehoused in the last year. Um, there had been, I think 17 people served, if I remember correctly, off the top of my head, um, in the, in the past year.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and I would just say for the, uh, if, I don't know that I'm, I'm looking through the, um, briefing report here and we only see a proposal from Crossroads. Uh, so if you could maybe disseminate that data to, uh, Commissioners and other one in trust.
Sure.
Maybe, yeah.
So when is your next meeting?
A month. They're, they're monthly.
Thank you.
But I, I think prob, I mean, the reality is, I mean, it's, I mean, it's to us now. I mean, I don't know that, I don't know that it would need to go back through the advisory board. Other than just an update to them on our conversations perhaps. So. Just a thought.
I agree with that.
Okay. So we'll bring this back then again next week.
Thank you.
And.
Twenty, $50,000.
See, I don't have my packet.
Okay. So the last one is the professional services contract 20 dash 042 with the community foundation of South Future Sound. That's the $50,000 that was given to help support, um, housing and other needs. Um, and it went through the kind of community foundation of South Future Sound. And then I think it, then it's, um, United Way of Mason County, uh, working with it. Um, we had some confusion on this contract because these funds, uh, we were a little unclear. The contract didn't state where the funds were actually coming from. And so Todd and I are a little bit confused. Is it from the 2163 funding that we're taking those, that we took those 50,000 from? And if so, um, the community foundation of South Future Sound will need to work according to the rules of that funding with Crossroads Housing, which is the lead coordination, coordinated entry agency, which is what's required of those funds. And there's language in there that says a nonprofit, um, that any nonprofit that is down in funding can be a recipient of these funds. And that does not fit the 2163 rule guidelines. And then United Way was written as the coordinated entry agency, but that might've been because United Way of Thurston County is the coordinated entry in Thurston County, but it is not for Mason County. It is community foundation or is it's Crossroads. So there's some things in this contract that are very confusing and they don't follow, um, the rules of the 2163 funding, if that's where it was taken from.
Yeah, Lydia, good, um, good point. So when we initially did this, I do believe it was the 2163 that we were intending to do. And we did lean heavily from, uh, the process that Thurston County used, um, just out of a, a, we wanted to get things moving and get a, um, you know, just kind of get money, um, out where it was needed. The other question I'll pose that probably doesn't help answer any of your questions, Lydia, but might help us going forward is, um, would this be CARES Act eligible now? We didn't have access to that money when we initially made this decision. Um, and you know, and potentially it would be a little bit more flexible than what we would see under the 2163 requirements. Um, and so I don't know, maybe that might be a worthwhile thing for us to consider.
Right. It's, it's Dave. And in my reading of CARES Act, it, that would seem to be an appropriate use. And I'm not sure. I don't see Frank on, missed it, dropped off. No, here you are, Frank. Do you have any thoughts on that?
No, I agree too.
I would, in my reading, I, it would be eligible under the CARES Act.
So do we know if they've used any?
Of the CARES Act?
No, if, if United Way has used any of the money yet. If, if not, I can get ahold of Ted and find out what's, what's, where they're at.
That'd be good to know.
Okay.
And then is it aside of that, if they did use any of the money from the initial distribution for, or the 2163, we could, could we backfill that? With CARES Act money? Or is that just kind of a lost sunk cost at this point then?
And that's a question I can't answer. It's, it's kind of a page question.
I would agree with that.
And that's our question I'll ask her.
Yeah. I mean, it would only be relevant if they had spent any of that money. So probably just start with.
Yeah, I'll start with Ted and I'll go to Paige.
Question, uh, your question tree appropriately.
Okay. That's all I have on, that's on here. Uh, we did a clarification this morning on the ball field. So I think we're good there. Um, I think that's all we have. I think that's all we have.
I do have one quick item for the Commission, and Dave, I know you and I talked about this last week. I don't know if any of your planning or building staff are still on or around, but information for the Commission at least. So last week, the State Building Code Council met in a special meeting, and we did extend to February 1st, 2021, implementation of the 2018 code that was previously extended to November 1st by the governor. So we got an extra couple of months there. Hopefully, this will give industry folks time to kind of catch their breath, get into the trainings that they need, get the supply chain issues figured out heading into next year. And also hopefully it'll give our staff and other regulatory staff in the state a chance to dig into the code as they kind of transition maybe from where in multiple hats due to the COVID response into figuring the ins and outs of the application of the 2018 Building and Energy Code. So it was a bit of a compromise. Initially, we had asked for a July 1st extension, so it would have been a year extension. But it looks like we're going to settle on the February 1st implementation date of the 2018 Building and Electrical Code.
That's good news.
Okay, that's all I have.
Good, and then you guys will come back with us with your updated hours and, you know, how you will be, how the planning department will be functioning as well.
Yeah.
Anything else for Dave?
Okay.
Thanks, Dave.
Yeah.
All right, I see that Public Works is on, so let's move into our Public Works briefing. Again, I'll go around the, I will announce who's here. So we do have Frank, Commissioner Netherlands, Commissioner Shutey, Loretta, Richard, and that looks about, I think that's about it.
Mike's in the office with me as well, Commissioner.
Great, great. All right, Loretta, take her away.
Good morning. All right, well, first up, Mike has federal aid project prospectus for you.
Yes, we're going to request the Commissioners to authorize the local agency federal aid project prospectus for East Aggett Road. That's mile post 1.7 to 3.1. If you've looked at the new paving that was done this year so far, it would basically be an extension of that same paved project to, for another 1.4 miles. This will bring us up to the requests from the local agencies to spend the 2020 STP funding. So we're excited to get this thing moving. As soon as we get this approved by the board and signed off by the county engineer, we can send it to local programs and get it obligated.
Any question? Just a quick question on our local funding. We're good on that on our side?
Yes, it's 13 and a half percent match is what it is.
Okay.
And we are budgeted.
Great, thank you. I'm good.
Hey.
And next I have a request for qualifications. Public Works is requesting authorization to select a consultant for the preliminary engineering work to extend Log Yard Road from SR3 to connect up with the new proposed SR3 freight route corridor. This would allow us to get a qualified consultant in to do the design work. And there's, there's additional supplemental task work that may be asked of them as design work, stormwater, you know, other, other things there. So this is budgeted at $200,000. And so we're requesting the board to authorize Public Works to select a consultant and sign the agreement with them.
Very good for me, well, heartily and. Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, and the last item that we have for you is an appointment for our TIPCAP Citizens Advisory Committee. And we are, we received an application from Mike Ringenberg, and he is applying to represent Mason Transit Authority. And Kathy is planning to retire and sail off to other fun, exciting adventures. And Mike is the replacement for Kathy. Kathy's done just a great job, and her energy is really going to be missed on the committee. But Mike attended last month, and I think he's up to the task. And he's, he's got good energy as well and certainly knowledgeable and would well represent Mason Transit and be a good addition to the Advisory Committee.
Yeah, good for Kathy on retiring. She'll definitely be missed, but I know that Mike will be a great addition.
Yes.
Well, Kathy's one of those few people, when you say she's going to sell off into other things, literally could. So that's, that's really great for her, and also great to have Mike step up for Mason Transit on TIPCAP. I'm completely supportive.
Great. Thank you, Commissioners. And I think that is about it for our planned items. I know Richard's also online here. Richard, do you have any utility updates you would like to share with Commissioners this morning?
No news.
Yeah, I could be muted. Well, in the meantime, any other items, Commissioners, for us?
I have nothing at this time.
All right. Mike can give you just a quickie update on our progress on our two culvert projects, if you like. We're getting ready to go to construction on those and definitely excited about that.
So if you haven't heard, on July 6th, we're going to close the road out at Deegan for the culvert project. We're going to use county forces for it. We actually had contact come down and, and do a little show and tell. We put the part of the pipe together out here on the yard. And so gained quite a bit of experience in that few hours that it took to do that. And so we're ready to go to put it in the ground come July 6th. And so by the end of the week, we should actually be constructing the pipe together. So if anybody ever wants to come by and, and take a quick look, make sure you bring your hard hat and vest and hard leather shoes. So you can be on the job site. But as soon as we get that project done, we're going to move right over to Shelton Valley to get the culvert there, July 20th, I believe, is when we're going to close the road there. That one's going to be the concrete box culvert, so we'll have a large crane there, probably the 22nd, 23rd, to actually set those box culverts. So that'd be a little show and tell there, too. It's not as big as Coffee Creek, but it's our own, it's our own horses doing the work. So it'll be, it's going to be cool.
That would be fun to see.
Yes, will be, thank you.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Nope, kind of, off and on.
A little bit.
There you go.
Yeah, pick this thing up. So I'll give you a quick little utility update, solid base. Like 13% for the second order. Horrible stuff. Can you guys actually hear me?
I guess you could call it that.
We'll have Richard go jump in here real quick.
I'll run down the hall.
Exactly. It's a long ways away.
That was the strangest thing ever. Okay, now you got me?
Yes.
We got you.
I'll just say a quick update. We're, we just completed our 26th week for the year, so I was able to give you a little comparison between first quarter, last quarter for solid waste. We're up 13% overall, which is good. And I'm sure Zach updated you. We will start seeing residential rollout, residential traffic coming from Mason County garbage in North County starts actually July 6th. Their commercial reload, I think Zach told you, be sometime in mid-July. It actually will start August 3rd at the beginning of that billing cycle. So that's what you can expect from there. I did ask him about, you know, why it took so long after they did receive the truck. And they had to inspect it, upfit it, decals, logos, get it insured, get it licensed, training a new driver, so it's, it came a little quicker than they expected, I think, and they just weren't ready for it. But either way, no excuses for them. They should be ready to go first part of August. Hopefully, they've learned their lesson on communication. It's essential. Relieve a lot of heartache for us. Water wastewater, we're plotting along strong as usual. We've ordered the pumps that were approved. The large pump is about three and a half months out. The other, if we'd have rebuilt that pump, it would have been three months out. So we're only lose two weeks on lead time on that. So that's where we're holding strong right now.
That sounds great.
So far, so good.
Well, let's, let's keep it so far, so good.
That's right. That's all I got.
Commissioners, anything for them?
Not for me.
Good day.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. All right, Commissioners, do we have anything?
I don't.
Nope.
Well, this is fun.
All right, well, in that case, Madam Chair, I move adjourned.
Second.
We're adjourned.
Good day.
Hey, guys.